Now. And you're on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Welcome to visitors. We've previously opened this meeting at six o'clock. We had to go into executive session. We're out of executive session now. And we're about to start the public. Public participation policy B D H has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely. In that event, people are welcome to. Come onboard. Please keep your camera and microphone off. It helps our progress. Otherwise, you can visit this. On. Montague Community Television and. There is in our website in the future. Is there anything that I forgot, Jane?
I don't think so unless anybody requested public participation, you would know that ahead. And if you don't, then I think with it.
All right, moving on, I believe Brian, you're going to bring us up to date on important events. Or is that not true?
Yep. So I wanted to again emphasize that the elementary school will hold its math night tomorrow in the Sheffield Cafeteria from six to seven thirty P M. Hillcrest will hold a preschool open house Friday, April twenty eighth. For new preschool families from twelve to two thirty P M. The Gil Montague Education Fund will hold its annual gala this Saturday evening at Turner's in the Turner's Falls High School Theater at seven. Next Wednesday, May third is an early release day for professional development. The. Secondary school, high school and middle school will hold are going to hold two separate concerts now because of the number of students that they have in their program. So they're going to have a coral or choir concert held next Wednesday at six thirty. And then the following Wednesday, May tenth. At six thirty, they will have their high school, middle school band concerts. I don't have a time on this, but I did want to add it in as an important event that sophomore class is doing a fundraiser. On Saturday, May sixth, it's a cornhole tournament and I will. Send out to the committee and send out in my superintendent's newsletter, the time when I get it from their advisor. Friends of Hillcrest will hold their spring festival on Sunday, May seventh from one to four P M. And then we begin the end of the year events wrapping up for seniors and others at the high school with the prom on Friday, May twelfth at Look Park. Turner's Falls High School will hold its Unity Day on Friday, May nineteenth. Sheffield Elementary School is also holding a talent show. On Friday, May nineteenth at six P M. The senior walkthrough will take place between Sheffield and Hillcrest over here. On Thursday, June first at ten forty five A M. And then Senior Awards Night is Thursday, June first. In the High School Theater at six thirty P M. And the High School Graduation will be held on Friday, June second in the gymnasium also at six thirty P M. And that's it for events.
I had one, Brian.
Yes, of course.
The Gil Elementary P T O's Spring Fundraiser where they sell their hanging baskets are May eleventh and twelfth. So May eleventh, it's three to five. And Friday, May twelfth, it's eight A M. To nine A M. And then again, three to five.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that the. Relative to the Gil Montague Education Fund Annual Gala. The school committee and the district certainly appreciate. All the efforts from outside. To promote. The educational. Opportunities. Available through Gil Montague. So thank, thank you to that group. That has been active for quite a few years now. Anyone else have something to add? Or can we move to the student representative report and? I understand we do have one. Ah, there you are. You're on. The cameras are rolling.
Alright, so I'll give my report. So let me see here. We have our main thing coming up for student council. We have is Unity Day. That is happening on May nineteenth. We've rain date of the following Monday, I believe. Um, we have reserved the dunk tank, which would be great. I'm pretty sure we're getting Mr. Barnes involved in that. So hopefully he'll be getting dunked in the tank.
Is he just finding out now?
Um, yeah, I think we kind of sprung it on him at morning meeting of the day. He tried to, uh, he tried to like blow it off to other teachers, but I don't think it's gonna work. I think he's gonna, he's gonna really enjoy that. We also are gonna have a talent show that day. That'll be really exciting. Ms. Camo is just starting the signups for that. So it's gonna be great. Um, that whole week leading up to Unity Day, we're gonna have a spirit week. I had a list of all the different days. I think I reported that last time where I have some really new creative spirit days. I'm excited to see how that goes. Um, we also have a senior celebration in the student council coming up. That's May twenty second, just to like honor our seniors who've been involved in student council for a long time. They get to do a little ceremony where they get to put their handprint and paint up on the wall with all the other graduated seniors. We have some fundraisers. The freshmen are going to be selling pizza and they are have also been selling concessions at the softball games. The sophomores are trying to run a cornhole tournament that's happening May sixth. They have to see how many people will sign up to see if it actually can happen, but hopefully they get a good numbers, be a good numbers there. Otherwise, the juniors, we just completed our butter grade fundraiser, which went very well. And we're trying to organize this new fundraiser, which is still kind of in the works. It's sort of like a raffle, but a little bit more of a spin off of that because I don't think we're technically allowed to do a raffle. But I'm excited to see how that will go. Yeah, that's what I have.
Thank you.
Brian, are you ready?
Yep, my superintendent's report for this meeting is very brief. I wanted to say thank you and congratulations to. Our Director of People's Services, Diane Ellis, who successfully wrote and secured. The Stop Violence, Stop School Violence Grant, also known as the STOP Grant, which is a competitive grant. To enhance school safety, the district will receive nearly twenty thousand dollars, which will primarily be dedicated to training a district threat assessment team. In addition, I wanted to once again mention the elementary. Math night for the entire district. That'll be held tomorrow evening, the twenty sixth in the Sheffield Cafeteria. And remind school committee that we have a tentative plan. For those committee members who could make it to meet with with students remotely. On Friday, May fifth at nine ten A M.
Thank you, Brian. Business and operations, Joanne.
Okay. So. I have a few different things to look at with you. So we could start with the budget transfers. So we have, we transfer funds. Throughout the year to cover overdoses to move money into a line that. We need more funds in to make a purchase. And so anything that happens, we bring those to you. Each month, we give you a monthly breakdown. So I have January and March transfers for you, and those are just for your review. But you don't need to approve these as they didn't cross functions. There happened to be no transfers in February. And I think later in the agenda. Do we have the transfers there? Now, I guess we have the transfers here now to vote. So I have three different. Transfers that you will need to approve. And I can just talk about each one of them. So. The first one is the non-union negotiable raises. So these, this is just a transfer that should have been made months ago, but. We, we. Hadn't made it yet. So this is a transfer to. Transfer from our negotiable increases line. Into the different salary lines where there's been a change in staffing or there's been. Or there were increases. So that's the first one. The second one is for custodial salaries for the same reason. Custodial negotiations finished and so there's been some changes in staffing and the negotiable increases moving into. Their salary lines. And then the third one. Is to cover utilities and out of districts and in district special ed transportation costs. And. That those funds are coming from primarily charter tuition. Or from a different heating line. So. If you would like to approve those, all three of those together, that would be fine. These you need to approve because they do cross functions. So the charter tuitions and a nine thousand function and it's going to cover. Some utility lines, which is in a four thousand function. So that's why that would come to you. The negotiable increases are in a five thousand and they're going to. Cover salary increases in the four thousands. The one thousands or the two thousands. So.
Do we have numbers attached to that?
Yep, there are, there's, there's whole transfer forms, which you can't see when I hold up in front of the screen like this, but. They're in the packet. There's a link for each one of them and they're, they're pretty significant numbers and a lot of different numbers. So. If you approve the transfers that are in there. I think we normally, we say vote to approve, transfer to move. Char surplus and charter tuition. To cover the cost of the deficit and utility and transportation accounts.
All of it comes out of charter tuition.
Um, part of that one does. The other part is coming from. Gas heat. Another utility line.
Okay. I don't have that in front of me. I just.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to vote them separately or do you want to vote them all together?
They can all be done together for as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, John, you're muted.
Oh, yeah, I just had a question before we vote. And that is, could the transfers to personnel be construed as a raise?
Well, that's what they were.
That's what they are.
Negotiable increases, right? So.
Okay, okay.
So when we build the budget, we put anything that's not negotiated yet into a negotiable salaries line. And then when the salaries are settled, we transfer those funds to cover the cost of those salaries.
So this then is being, there was that line that, and you'll have to excuse, you know, my relative, my ignorance here, but. I recall there was a line that had approximately two hundred thousand dollars, if I recall. And I have the budget. I just forgot the line item for it. For, and that was like two hundred thousand dollars in raises for all units. Is that correct?
I don't remember what the number was, John. I think it was larger than that. It might have been two hundred thousand dollar increase. I'm not sure. But yeah, it's coming from that line.
It's coming from that line. I see. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that I can't see?
I'll make the motion to approve all three.
Thank you, Nick. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jane. All in favor? Do we need a roll call in all of these?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Nick, why don't you start?
Yes.
And Heather. I'll assume that was a yes. John.
I'll abstain.
Abstain. Jane?
Yes.
And myself, Bill. Yes. One abstention for in favor? Thank you all.
Okay, the next item I have is just the handout that we sent to the town of Montague to include in their packet for town meeting. And at the next meeting, I'll bring the town of Gill handout. That we'll have there. So this just sort of summarizes our budget. It shows what the assessments have been over time, what our revenues are and our expenses. For the year, and then we have on the back some educational highlights, some highlights of our revenue and expenses. What our capital requests are, and then our enrollment trends and those enrollment trends. Show that decline in charter and school choice out. So that's just informational. I also have. The operating statement and an expenditure report for you. So the expenditure report is. Just for you to review. And ask questions if you have them. The operating statement shows where our budget is. So. I'm including estimates. Down in the bottom of anticipated expenditures. So it looks like our general fund anticipated. Surplus will be about three hundred thousand dollars and that would roll into E and D at the end of the year. So our revenues are relatively flat. Our expenses have about three hundred thousand dollars in surplus. And that's what leads to the money rolling into E and D. And at the bottom, I'm showing our revolving accounts that show where our beginning balances are. What our revenues are, anticipated revenue. Our year-to-date expenses, anticipated expenses. So. We are assuming that we will spend the Esser. Funds that we have received. So far from Esser two, Esser one is closed. Esser two will spend down this year and then Esser three will have one more year on. The rural aid is money that we get funding on each, each year for the past several years. We don't ever know for sure if we're going to get it in future years, but that money needs to be spent in the year that we receive it. Foundation Reserve was a one-time funding that we got. Around this time last year, and we are just working on spending that now. On some projects and some new equipment. And then our cafeteria revolving is the another big one that. We're assuming that our, we're gonna. We're gonna spend a little bit more than we bring in this year. And we're probably going to do that again next year and hopefully the revenues keep up and so we can break even. We're trying to increase our participation so we can bring in more revenues. But the revolving fund is self-sufficient. Nick?
Can I just ask a question about the contracted services for the school committee expenditures? Can you tell me what that is and why it's overspent?
That is our audits. And there was an extra audit that we. It was the school student activity audit that it was being done in fiscal twenty-two. But then they didn't finalize it until fiscal twenty-three. So that was an extra and I'm gonna have to look at the. Exactly what else is in there. There's also our GASB audit that has to be done. And so that. Is it's less money for two years than it's more money for one year. And so that might have been. Miscalculated there, but that number does seem high and we may be over encumbered. I think one of the things the auditors had said is that they also, because of the. The significant Esser funds, they may have to do an extra audit. And so I think we. Encumbered an extra five thousand there and then they didn't have to do that extra audit. So that number is going to come back down. But the, the rest of it should be due to the. Student activity audit and then the. GASB audit would be what brought them over.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One thing I want to bring up in all of this discussion of budget and moving forward is. The importance to me and in any event. Of maintaining as much of a. A free breakfast lunch program as we can. Reasonably do, because. That kind of act, that kind of need should never be. Underlooked.
Yes, so we do qualify for C E P for the whole district. And so even if the free lunch were to go away. That everybody gets the free lunch right now throughout the state. We would still have free lunch. We might get less revenue for those lunches and breakfasts. But it would still be free to all students because we qualify for C E P, which is. I, I can't remember what the initials stand for, something. Can't remember what it is, but C E P. Gives us free lunch.
Remember it either. It's okay.
Can't remember, right? Free lunch and breakfast.
On this, are we looking for a vote right now?
Uh, no, we do not need a vote on that.
All right.
So in that, that's all I have. And then. We have more to talk about during business, but that's all I have for you for right now.
Great. School committee reports involves a bunch of warrants that we need to approve. I'll just list the warrants. F Y twenty-three counts payable warrant thirty-three forty-three. Date, all of these are dated for twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. First one being for a hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. F Y twenty-three A P warrant number thirty-three forty-four. Fifty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. F Y twenty-three A P warrant number three-three four-seven. Amount of one thousand twenty-nine forty-five. F Y twenty-three high school student activity account warrant thirty-three forty-five. With the amount eighty-three, eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. And fiscal year twenty-three. H A, I don't know what H A is. Student Activity Account Warrant. Number thirty-three forty-six for the amount of five thousand eight hundred and sixty. Dollars and eighty-five cents. And I think. We can vote all of these at once or individually. I would hope we do them all at once. But what do you? As members want to do?
Somebody check my math that the total is two sixty-four thirteen and thirty-seven cents.
Got your calculator, Joanne?
Yes, but it's on my phone, so it's taking me a minute here.
I know the last number is a seven.
All right, what did you have, Nick?
I had two sixty-four thirteen and thirty-seven cents.
That's what I got too.
Okay, then I move that we approve all the warrants in the total amount of two sixty-four thirteen and thirty-seven cents.
And I'll say. Thank you, John. Any discussion, any further discussion? Then we'll take a roll call vote again. Do we, I think we need to continue roll calls. I don't remember. Anyway.
We're virtual. I think we have to do a roll call for every vote.
Yeah, all right, Nick?
Yes.
John? Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And myself, Bill, yes. Thank you. Now we're back to business. Joanne, you're on the docket again. Or maybe not.
Oh, no, that's just because it says business. But.
High school program of studies, that's. Not Joanne's forte.
No.
High school. How to pay for it.
High school principal Christopher Barnes is here to share some changes. To the program of studies that need to be approved so that they can begin course registration.
Uh, excuse me. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Brian, do you know if I can share my screen? Um, it looks like I might be able to.
Yeah, you should be able to. There should be a. A marker at the bottom.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was enabled. Can everybody see that?
Yep, and they have it in their, in their agenda.
Yes, yep. So again, I'm Christopher Barnes, principal at the secondary school. Um, we just have a few changes to the program of studies and everything follows, you know, pretty logically with what we've been doing. The first one that you'll see there is the project lead the way principles of engineering. Um, that's if you're not familiar with that, that's one of our innovation pathways. And the way that these pathways work is the first year we offer, let's say. Two courses and the next year it's an additional one. And so we just started principles of engineering this year. Or pardon me, the manufacturing pathway this year. And so this is the next course that we add for next year. It's based on a curriculum that is in conjunction with Massachusetts approved. Pathways and the teacher has taken a course for this. To teach this course. It's five credits. That's a typical full high school course. You know, a full class every day for one semester. Should I pause for any questions or should I keep going or?
I'm hoping you keep going.
Keep going. Thank you. All right. So the next one, Latin five, this isn't something that we would normally have, but just the way that things have worked out recently. Um, we've had a lot of students or at least a healthy number of students. And now I say that and I can't remember what the number is. Pretty sure it's. Double digits or else we wouldn't be doing this. Who have been very interested in Latin and have been able to take up through Latin four. During their high school career, sometimes what kids are able to do is they're able to take maybe Latin one first semester and Latin two second semester, which. Through a couple of years can get them up to Latin five, but we just have this particular cohort. So our. Foreign language teacher who teaches Latin, Ms. Penixon has advocated for this and we really think this would be a great opportunity for the kids. Um, there's a description there and they'll really be using Latin in context of the Odyssey. Game coding, this is something that we can use in several different ways. It can be a technology requirement. We're hoping, we're hoping, we're not there yet, but we're hoping at some point we will have a computer programming innovation pathway. This could be used for that, but it's also something that kids find very interesting. And obviously we want to offer students classes. The kids find interesting. So this, I'm sorry, I'm going to back up. The Latin five is again a full, a full course with the five credits, as you can see. The game coding is, is half of that. It's every other day for a semester. Um, the description is there on the way it's going to be taught and we're just really hoping to get again more. Engagement through the kinds of things that kids are interested in doing through technology. And then we just have one removal. Prior to my arrival, you know, at the beginning of last year. Biology one was taught in ninth grade, biology two and tenth grade, or I should say in two separate semesters. And. And we had our science department along with Jean Powers, who's a former science teacher. Really look at this because not very many schools do it that way. Most schools will just offer it as a full, you know, year course or semesterized course, depending on how they do things. Um, so. Through a study of looking at that and the teachers working together with Jean, it was determined that we can offer. Biology in one class. A full five credit course. And not have to use that second. Science slot, but still be able to meet all the standards and be able to prepare the students. For the M C A S. So it'll be going from two classes into one class, which is pretty traditional, actually. Any questions on any of that?
So that's just two semesters that are put into one year. It's really the same intensity, but they're just. Instead of in two separate calendar years, they would take biology. They take, I guess, the biology one in the first semester and biology two in the second.
They had been doing it in two semesters, yes, but now it'll just be a one semester course.
It's the one semester. Okay, so is that twice as rigorous or twice as intense for that?
No, I, I think that, I think that we were trying to cover, I, I can't really tell you what the, what the history of doing it in two semesters. Was because I wasn't here when that was put into place, but. As I said, you know, I've, I've worked in, I think, four high schools and I've never seen it as a doubled course and. And it, you know, it wasn't just my idea. It was, you know, Jean Powers and the science department, we're all looking at this like, wait a second, why are we doing it this way? And. Maybe it was to slow it down to go a little more in depth in order to prepare the students better for M C A S because the M C A S is in tenth grade. I'm not sure, but we're confident that we can cover all the material. um, as dictated by the state and have kids prepared, um, through just the one semester.
And those other courses look great, especially the principles of engineering and game coding. Those are, those, those have to grab some kids, I would think.
I really hope so. I really do. This is, this is, you know, we're just trying to find things that are going to make it more exciting. We were, we were very, um, excited about last year when we were able to get the manufacturing pathway into place. And we just think there were really some really cool courses. So we're following, um, behind that with the, um, required technology and getting that technology in place for the teachers and the kids.
Can you give a, a quick overview of, um, how Latin is becoming a focal point to some degree?
I, I'm sorry, Bill. I don't mean to laugh. I just laugh because Ms. Bennixson is a, is, uh, she's a, she's an amazing teacher, you know, and kids love amazing teachers, right? Um, and, uh, I, she also recognized and I, I just touched on this briefly that this is a little bit of a cohort bubble, right? She doesn't expect that this is going to be a Latin five again, for example, next year. She doesn't see those numbers. She just sees those numbers right now. And, and really I, I said it and I'll just say it again. She's an amazing teacher. She has an incredible energy. And, um, she's got a rigorous program, but a fun program and kids really love that. And I think that's why they're there. They were also, as you know, they had the trip to Paris and Rome and, um, and, and kids were really engaged through that. And I think that's another piece of it.
But yeah, well, that, that interested me too, the, uh, because I'm not sure, other than through the, the church that, um, Italian and Latin are necessarily the same, although I know those, the latter, uh, leads into the former. But as it, as Latin means a lot to the English language too. So I'm just curious to hear, hear your.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's really cool. There's a lot of potential for, uh, preparing kids for all sorts of things. Medical fields, whatever, you know?
Jane, you wanna?
Um, yeah, I'm just so impressed with all of them, as you say, but to be able to offer Latin five, I think that's really not typical. And I think it's wonderful to be able to access the student interest and offer something that particular students want to take. I think that's a, a real plus and I'm very pleased.
We're pleased to be able to do it. Thank you.
I did take, uh, two years of Latin in my time, but I haven't heard about it for a while.
I've ta, I took two and I can't say I was enthused to go to five.
Well, like I said, that says something about the teacher then, right?
I, I will admit that absolutely. She must be something.
She is. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Close that and did that stop the screen share there? I hope. Yes, it did. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
We need to vote on that.
Yes.
Then I move that we approve it.
And the second.
A little second. Are you looking for a second?
Yeah.
I'll say.
Thank you. All in favor?
We need a roll.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It's hard to get used to.
It is. Jane.
Yes.
Uh, Nick?
Yes.
John? Yes. Heather?
Yes.
And myself, Bill, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you. Appreciate the support.
We'll see tomorrow.
I think we're moving into suspension of policies. Is that correct? Uh, that's policy BGA, BGF. And suspension of specifically sus- suspension of policy BDA, the annual organizational vote. Brian, do you have, uh, specifics on that?
Yeah, sorry, John. Did you had your hand up for something?
Yeah, I'm not the ones I had. I can't read. They came out really faint.
They're pale and it's too hard to read it.
In the scanning? And at the last meeting, we had voted, or the committee had voted to suspend the existing policy on annual organization. It current, the, the policy BDA currently requires the school committee to get together within seventy-two hours of the election to reorganize. And most other school committees, um, do their organis, annual organization at the next regularly scheduled meeting rather than scheduling a third meeting, given the fact that we obviously have difficulty maintaining membership. We wanted to, uh, use policy BGF to give a reprieve to members of school committee so that they would not have to add an additional meeting in the month of May, but could rather do it um, at the May meeting and that will give a time for Jane and I to do some research and get some, some policies from other districts that read similar to what we were hoping for, which is to hold a meeting. Um, I'm sorry, to conduct the reorganization of the school committee at the next regularly scheduled meeting after the vote. And so the intent really is to, to suspend this policy for now and then, um, hold the reorganization really as the first agenda item for the meeting on May twenty-third.
And the main reason for this is because in the interim from our first meeting in May and then the elections, if the chair, if the current chair were not reelected, then you would potentially be leaderless in the event that there was an issue that came up that somebody in responsibility had to perform on the school committee, which would be generally the chairperson. So I think that, uh, personally, I don't understand why we have to have a seventy-two hour um, mandate, but Jane.
Um, yes, I was able to do some research in between, but not as much as I wanted to. Um, our policy on reorganization is not typical for most districts that I'm aware of. And so I was able to go in and look at the Mass Association of School Committees' um, policy manual, which has a general policy that's often used or something similar. They had been, their website had been hacked and was out of commission for several weeks, so I wasn't able to get to it before our last meeting. Otherwise I would have tried to get my policy people together and have a suggested new policy to change it to. But I was able to look at their policy and theirs is that it's generally held at the next regular meeting. It isn't within seventy-two hours. And therefore, once we are going to reactivate our policy subcommittee and bring some changes to the full committee very soon, we hope. And one of those will be, we'll come up with a new version of that, which seems more manageable and doesn't mean we have to hurry. I think having it within seventy-two hours put a lot of pressure on the two towns clerks to, um, not only get the regular count, but to count write-ins, uh, get people sworn in. That was really tricky. So this would make it, I think, work better all around and we will work on that. But the requirement, when we looked at the policies, if you suspend a policy, the requirement is that you review the suspension of it at the next meeting. So if no one at this point has an objection, we're just reviewing it and saying that's okay with us at this point to continue to do that right now.
Yeah. And the only reason I put vote on there is in case somebody had an objection and we had to take another vote. But if we don't have to take another vote, we can just move forward with the, the vote from the previous meeting to suspend the policy.
I'm happy to not take another vote. What's your preference, Jane?
I think if anyone would like to, they could say so and we will. Otherwise I think we're fine.
Anyone gonna pick up on Jane's offer? And I don't see anybody.
We're good.
Okay. Does this bring you up, Brian?
Yep. So I'm going to share my screen. Um, I don't have a slideshow and I'm not going to do a lengthy presentation. I just wanted to spend a little bit more time uh, sort of explaining the document itself and what I'm sharing. And then I'm going to email that to the members of the committee. So that, um, the committee has the evidence and artifacts on the eight focus indicators over the four standards for evaluation. And then Tina will spend a few minutes just, uh, putting the, uh, form up on the screen and providing some technical support so that people have an idea of how to fill it out. So it'll just take me one second to share my screen. Go. Okay. And so in the first indicator, and again, I'm not going to read all the way through this or in each of the documents. Um, I will just provide a little bit of information and some highlights. And although I can't, you'll have to yell, I can see. I can't quite see everybody, but if anybody has a question, please chime in. So the first, the first focus indicator is meeting diverse needs. Um, you'll see up here, there's a little bit of a key that the three superintendent goals are numbered in bold. And, uh, you can see an example here. So the first superintendent's goal, submit a statement of interest for Hillcrest Elementary School. In parentheses, I just put a self-assessment of the progress. Um, this one was actually completed. We've spent a lot of time on that one already over the course of several meetings, but I wanted to say thank you to everybody who, um, worked for months and months and months to pull those hundreds of pages together to get that proposal submitted. We have also, as administrators, um, been participating throughout the year and will continue uh, to participate in a, um, a professional learning community on educator evaluation, given the fact that we have had some new principals join, two new principals join us last year, one new principal uh, and a new assistant. We've had four new evaluators join us over the past two years. It seemed to make sense for us to get together and, uh, really calibrate the way we provide feedback to teachers. And so there's a little summary here that, uh, you should be able to access through the link. And the things that we basically focused on were, uh, refine the evaluation forms that we use in our electronic evaluation system. Ensure that all rubrics are updated and that each are being appropriately replied. Um, we, we've created and populated tools to ensure that educators are at the correct point in the evaluation cycle, but also to plan and schedule meetings and observations to allow evaluators to meet contractual timelines. We've aligned the format of our writing obs, for writing observation reports and we've done some practice observations. Jean Powers has done a really nice job of, of, um, bringing some resources from the Department of Education for us to share. And so we have done some combined, um, observations where we've all watched a film and then shared out and then practiced writing and shared our writing with one another. And, um, standardized the format into what's often called the Saffir method, um, which talks about making a claim, providing evidence, um, making a judgment and talking about the impact of that judgment. And the work has been really good for us to not only share ideas with one another, but to bring a, a higher, much higher level of consistency. Um, we've also taken the time to, uh, use the tools of the Department of Education related to look fours. And so there are certain things that we want to look for when we're going into particular classrooms and they have a huge um, set of these that we can use in everything from, you know, observing content and practice in a mathematics classroom to, uh, observing, trying to make specific observations, uh, to help a teacher who, uh, might need some assistance in, in becoming more culturally proficient. So there's really a broad gamut of these tools and it's been really exciting for us to get together and, um, spend time really calibrating what we do so that we, we have a higher level common, commonality while using a common, uh, process, while using common language and removing a number of the things that were ancillary in the old documents, such as checkboxes and other things that really didn't belong there. And then we've been participating in the culturally responsive practices, Leadership Academy. We, this is a three-year program. This was year one. And, uh, I did share a document uh, so that you can see the overall goals of the program over three years. In, um, the second uh, focus indicator adjustments to practice. The second superintendent's goal is here. This is both a, uh, a superintendent's goal and a district improvement plan goal. Um, the only reason I wouldn't characterize this as completed is that the third, um, and final writing assessments have not been produced yet. Those are due to take place next week. But I did share a document that summarizes, um, what has been done at the secondary level to help students improve their content area writing skills and, and across all content areas. And I'm very impressed with the work that's been done um, by the high school and middle school teachers across all content areas to really collaborate really intensively to help students improve writing. I also hope to see the results of those improvements appear on MCAS scores next fall. And we continue to monitor growth in reading and mathematics. I did again, share the mid-year I-ready data presentation um, from earlier in the school year. I think we did that at a February meeting. The social emotional well-being indicator, uh, I, this is a, a district improvement plan goal. And I shared the social emotional and, uh, learning and mental health frameworks action plan. I really have to give a ton of credit here to the principals, to Diane Ellis, uh, and to Jean Powers, as well as our consultant Alex Hirschberg, who really have done a remarkable job to put together two years worth of work in that framework. Uh, as one of the goals, we will be, we're in the process and, and sort of just wrapping up the process for adopting a new district-wide elementary social emotional learning curriculum. And so that committee, which serves as a subgroup of the social, social emotional learning committee, um, is very close to committing to a particular curriculum to adopt for next year. In addition to that, we will be adopting a, a school-wide information system, also known as SWISS. It's a behavioral da- data management system to enable better tracking and data analysis on student behavior at all levels in order to better drive decision-making around policies, practices, programs and curriculum. Under student health and safety, uh, this is the third of the superintendent goals. Yesterday I sent out a call for, uh, invitations to a district wellness committee. And I'm very pleased to have received so much interest, both from staff as well as from families and, uh, also members of the community. So to just give you an idea, in twenty-four hours, we've gotten, um, willing participants from both elementary and secondary level parents. We have a school nurse, a physical education teacher, our food service director, administrators. We're going to have multilingual representatives, students, there's a school committee member, there's a community healthcare professional, a special education teacher, a related service provider and a parent who is a collegiate level health professional at one of the local colleges. So it's a really diverse group of thinkers um, who will be meeting four times a year. Our first meeting will be on um, May sixteenth and we'll begin reviewing the existic, dis- district wellness policy, which is, um, out of date and, uh, begin to integrate new research and hopefully over the course of the summer or even into the fall of next year, uh, bring a new wellness policy or proposed wellness policy to the school committee. And so I've only made some progress on that goal. I had mentioned in my superintendent's report, the STOP grant. And, uh, Alex Hirschberg, our consultant, has done training of counselors and support staff And Alex Hirschberg, our consultant, has done training of counselors and support staff on suicide risk factors and assessments for students. In family engagement. I just built a list of a number of activities that have gone on this year from the English Language Parent Advisory Council kickoff meeting that happened at Sheffield in the fall, as well as the Special Education Parent Advisory Council meeting, the Read Across America events to celebrate literacy in the elementary schools, as well as the Turner's Falls High School Extravaganza in March, which helps to highlight programming and give prospective students and their families an opportunity to see the school. As well as the Elementary Family Math Night, which will take place tomorrow night and are hosted by our three math interventionists. And then we did some work this year on making some changes to our practices to try to stem chronic absenteeism in any of our schools. And this is a district improvement plan goal. It includes refining procedures to support and mitigate chronic absenteeism. We'll look at that during our summer retreat. Part of that reflection is gonna continue to consider our practices, some of the practices that have been piloted this year by administration for some families, as well as the changing roles of the juvenile court and the Department of Children and Families in supporting student attendance. Looking at student support team recommendations and attendance monitoring practices. And these will be highlighted for school committee approval prior to the start of the 23, 24 school years. They'll be added to the student and family handbooks over the summer. Community and stakeholder engagement. Want to thank the Montague and Gill Public Safety Departments for their elementary safety education programs that they do multiple times per year, but they really begin them just before Halloween. The Mass Hire Organization, with whom we have a partnership that's provided guidance related to creating the variety of courses and internships related to the Innovation Pathways Program and allowing us to add a third innovation pathway at Turner's Falls High School this year. I do also want to thank people, and I hope to see this continue. We've had a significant number of instruments donated to the district music program. These have come both from community donors as well as friends and family and random people from across New England who have heard about this contacted us and sent Miss Camo trombones, snare drums, violin, French horns, that really getting us closer to provide any student who wants to play an instrument, the opportunity to learn how to do so without having to purchase an instrument. And again, highlighting the fact that the music program has gone from 18 students to 120 students in just three years. The theater program has also grown, having both fall and spring productions and each with two full casts in performing. There's, we've instituted now that, you know, the COVID restrictions had ended, but this year, elementary banking and programs that help children learn how to save at each of the elementary schools with both Greenfield Savings and Freedom Credit Union, both local banks who send people into the schools to provide assistance with that. The Montague Library Tables that were set up at each of the Read Across America Literacy Night events in Hillcrest and Sheffield and the resources that the library extends to us. The Friends of Sheffield Books for Bingo Night and the Trunk or Treat Event in the fall, as well as the upcoming Hillcrest Spring Festival and the Gill Bonfire are all outstanding community events. In terms of aspirational thinking and in that process to gather community input for ideas for a district long-term strategic plan, the current strategic plan takes us from 2021 through 2024. So that plan ends at the, at the conclusion of the next school year. And so I felt that it was important to begin a process of gathering input as we try to make. We're in a constant state of improvement in the district. So I'm gonna be working with a high school, with the high school production classes to put together a brief narrated film that highlights the strength of our district and our community and shares some possibilities for a variety of new programs, activities, and ideas. The film is also intended to encourage families to to share their own ideas, and this should be completed before June 16th. I'm also gonna identify students who are interested and willing to narrate a Spanish version of the film and place both versions on the school website just prior to the start of the next school year and encourage families to watch the video and then release a survey in early September and, and provide the results to school committee and the administrative team in October, just in advance of the budget cycle, in case there's something that we might be looking to pilot. Or in case we're looking to do something programmatically and really need to plan for that in the budget process. And then that will, we'll also use that in administrative team discussions beginning in December to develop, to begin the process of developing a new long-term district strategic plan, which will take us from 2024 through 2027. And there's just a brief summary there. And then in this indicator, I had mentioned earlier that we've been participating not only in the culturally responsive practices Leadership Academy, but that me and 24 other educators from around the district also participated in a book study called Culturally Responsive Teaching for Multilingual Learners. And it, it was fascinating and not only validating for a number of people who engaged in a number of those practices, but people really picked up a pretty significant number of ideas, and I hope that that will be extended to their colleagues. We did also, as part of the district improvement plan, we did an analysis to try to figure out really what's standing in the way of increasing the number of high school students who are enrolled in challenging coursework. The analysis first began with a look at the reported, the DESI-reported course codes and levels in our student information system. And they are all appropriate, appropriately coded and identified in, with the exception of one or two college courses, which were not running this year, but when students are dual-enrolled, if they're earning college credit, those should also be counted as advanced coursework as defined by the Department of Education, and our district should be getting credit for that. I was pleased to see that our program of studies does not have any arbitrary or potentially discriminatory prerequisites for enrollment in challenging coursework. As an example, the idea of earning a grade of at least a B in biology in order to take AP Biology, we don't have those prerequisites. And so without those barriers, the courses are more open. And so for next steps, I need to ensure that the high school administration and guidance staff are aware of the courses that qualify as defined advanced coursework and that they share that information with all of the faculty. While there's not a free, set of free requisites, there is a process where teachers make recommendations for the next course that students should take. And I want to make sure that Christopher and his faculty have the, the information that they need to really actively recruit students to take more challenging coursework, knowing that that will have them better prepared for their post-secondary options. And hopefully, in doing so, that we can encourage a significantly larger number of students from, from a large, from very diverse backgrounds to increase their enrollment in challenging coursework at the high school level and thus be better prepared for life after high school. And then for continuous staff learning, I included the professional development plans and wanted to again, thank Jean Powers for her creation this year in collaboration with administrators as well as members of the faculty to develop, to create a professional develop hand, development handbook, which is also included in here is the link. And I've included the elementary mathematics plan, which is in its first year of implementation this year, which is also part of the district improvement plan. And I plan to send that out to the school committee as early as tomorrow. And if anybody has any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I will say that on the support side, I'm referring directly to your counseling for in the timeframe of increased, I'm not sure how to say, instability anyway, and emotionally for students. You referenced suicide counseling, and I have to admit that my brother, excuse me, was a suicide before his 18th birthday. At the time, counselors were not part of the normal regimen. And I think it's important that people be able to talk about it to others. And it's certainly not a new event for, for young people to be distressed and not show it. And it's very hard to pick up on. So part of that counseling is preventative, I'm sure. And then part of it is after the fact.
Diane, is there anything that you want to add to that? Because you were really took a very strong lead and was really one of the first points of emphasis that you made when we did get the Social Emotional Learning Grant. And I thank you for that, for having that as the, as a primary point of emphasis.
Hello, everyone. Diane Ellis, Student Services Director. And and Bill just acknowledging, you know, just the loss of your family member. And unfortunately, we do, you know, people sometimes are afraid to talk about suicide or talk about feelings around self-harm or depression and not being able to see a way out. And so we do have a suicide prevention protocol. We have one at the elementary level and we have one at the secondary level where our district counselors have worked with Alex Hirschberg and have a, you know, evidence-based protocol. I'm gonna forget my initials here, but I want to say it's the Columbia Suicide Skills. I know Sheila's on this call, she could remember this more easily than I. But we, we do have a protocol in place and kind of that is also one of the goals of our social emotional implementation framework is sort of recognizing systems of response for students in, in our engagement with crisis services and with other providers. And the, the sort of flip side of that, which I know Brian talked about, the STOP grant, is having a protocol for our district teams to be able to really respond quickly and responsibly in a very very guided way when there is a question of an individual posing, posing a risk to our school community. So there are also established protocols that the FBI and other threat reduction or threat harm reduction agencies have created. So the district has done some training and will continue to do training. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Nick Locata for bringing this grant opportunity through the Department of Justice and EOPS, which I don't remember the name of that. I'm starting to just speak in acronyms now. That's our new thing. But they, you know, we brought the, the grant opportunity to our attention and we pursued it. It is the paperwork associated that is like a whole new level of learning and new forms for all of us. But we're really excited to be able to go through and train a team of folks with our school resource officer and also be in to look at ways that we can support, you know, students or any individuals who be able to assess and respond if there's someone who may pose some type of safety risk to our community. So I appreciate the time to just be able to speak to the committee about that this evening. Is there, if there's any questions or anything for me, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, I'll turn things back over. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Moving on. We're at, I'm sorry. Technical support. I believe.
So following Brian's presentation with his evaluation, I'm here to just provide a quick overview of the form that you're going to be using and filling out for this evaluation. So this is something that I'm going to share. And it's very much, sorry. Get something prepared. So just in preparation for this one, this is a, this particular form is similar to the one that you had last year. The only thing about it is that it does follow, you know, the previous presentation that Brian had given you. More closely, you know, it's the same focus indicator. The goals are kind of changed. Now, the one very important piece with regards to it is that when you do access it, it's meant to really be only for you. And basically, not just you per se, but then your GMRSD.us account. And I think one of the things that we really did discover last year is that when you do access it, you need to make sure that none of your Gmail accounts, any other personal accounts are logged in. So this should be the only one that is logged in, which is your .us account. And again, any kind of assistance with regards to that, you know, I can provide, especially if you need a reboot of the password for it. So share my screen. And this is a copy of our, I'm gonna make it a little bigger so that everybody can actually see it. So the end-of-cycle summative evaluation report, Mrs. Superintendent, there are three sections to it. Progress of superintendent goals, one, two, and three. The standards rating, standards one, two, three, and four. And your overall summative rating. So at a certain point in the, you know, in the first page of the document, it will ask for school committee member name. This is not something that's going to be accessible to the superintendent. This is only for terrorists used so that he might be able to keep track of everybody's submissions. Following that, you will have your superintendent's performance goals, which are your professional practice goals, student learning goals, and a district improvement one. So one of the, for example, what's gonna happen is that, you know, we start with a professional practice goal. Which is quoted here, but it also has the measurable outcomes or product that, that Brian had also explained to you. So you will rate him on that one, on his student learning goal and your, and his district improvement goal. Following that, the next section is where your standards will begin. So there will be all four standards, one, two, three, and four. But then for every standard, right, as he had explained, there will be some focus indicators. For example, for standard one, you have your 1B focus indicator and 1C focus indicator, instruction and assessment. But following that, you would notice this particular link, the superintendent and district administrator rubric. This one here is helpful if you really want to get into the details of all this, of each of these indicators and standards. But what I've tried to do here is already provided you in particular the details of the focus indicators. One of them is, and, and included in that is the definition of what proficiency is. Only because, you know, at a certain point, you, you don't wanna like zoom in if you wanted to, to particularly look at this once. But then what's more important is that, you know, if you wanted to ask, access the rubric itself, then you have a link over there. So these are the focus indicators, which means that So these are the focus indicators, which means that the section will then end or in the rating for standard one. If or standard two or standard three, standard four. So it will always have end with rating for standard one and then a comments and analysis um uh. Section here, the no, the thing to note about comments and analysis is that it's recommended for any overall rating, yes. But it's required for over for overall rating of exemplary exemplary needs improvement or and or unsatisfactory. So um each of the standards will have that same um uh. Elements, it will have the focus indicators, it will also have then a question with regards to the rating and your comments and analysis. The standard two, standard three. Standard four. And then following that in after standard four, you will have the third uh the third section, which is the overall summative performance. Um and based on the progress for towards goals and performance and standards, rate the overall summative performance. And your comments and analysis and at that point you can submit. Now, one of the things about the um. The form is that as long as you're logged in, what will happen is that it will allow you with your dot US account. It will allow you to actually um save the work. So so you can just practically leave the work, right? The form if you need to um and go back to it, right? So I will be sending you a link and from that link, you're going to use that link. You're going to log in with your dot US account, use that link, be able to fill it out. And if you were unable to finish it in one sitting, that's fine. You can go back to that same link and it will actually save um and and get you started the same. So um again, you know, I will help you with um access. I will help you with, you know, being able to go through those through that Google form. Great. You have any questions?
Tina, for with regard to providing enough time for Tara. That um we should really have, I think that we should send out, when you send this out to members of the committee, it really should be completed. Prior to May fifth, because that would give her Friday and Monday and Tuesday effectively to work on it. And it gives the committee more than a week to work their way through the document. So if we were to just say by seven AM on on May fifth, I think as the deadline. That I think will give everybody enough time to pour through documents and work on this and give Tara enough time to pull it together for the committee meeting on May ninth.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're back. Thanks a lot. For all of that, Tina. And I'm sure I'll be coming to you for some help.
You're welcome, always.
Yeah, Jane.
Um, thank you both, Brian and Tina. Uh definitely, this has gotten to be a better form with all the work people have done. Um it's, wait a minute. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm doing it on my phone and I'm not familiar with that, so if something happens, it's not my fault. Um I think it is, it is a little more usable or user friendly perhaps uh. But I I just in case people are new filling this out, um as Tina said, we're the only ones that can see it as we fill it out. It then goes to Tara who uh collates the information and the document itself is discussed in open session. It is.
You just.
Not discussed um in any closed session. Did I?
You froze a bit there.
Okay.
Decided in open session, right?
Yes, yes, thank you. That was the point. Yep.
Anyone else have any comments other than thank you, Brian, for great presentation, although that's no reflection on your. Evaluation. Uh I think we're down to superintendent's contract vote. We worked on the superintendent's contract thoughts. In our session and I believe we're ready to make a motion. And. How would you word that motion? Jane.
Um just to the opening, we are Brian's three-year contract is just uh.
Oh, Bill never freezes. Oh, is that me?
I don't know. No, Bill's moving, I'm moving. I don't know, is it you? So um we are uh negotiating a new three-year contract with Brian. His first three-year contract is just completed at the end of the school year. Um and therefore we will be um making a motion firstly to um. Give him the raise. I don't know how to phrase this. Joanne might help us. The raise that um we did not give him last year, he uh. Chose to wait and not take a raise last year um because we were in negotiations. So we're in a position now of giving him what he shouldn't have got a raise last year. And also the raise that he will be getting in the first year of his new contract.
Yep.
Sorry, I missed all that because I, for some reason, I got kicked out.
No offense, but I just explained that we needed to um award the raise that we didn't award to you last year. Because you opted to wait and that was the third year of your contract for this year that we're finishing. And now we are entering a new three-year contract with you. And we're establishing the salary for the first year of those three years. That's the way it is done customarily.
Okay.
So do you want the. Do you want the dollar amount for fiscal twenty-three and the fiscal twenty-four raises?
Yes. Yes, in the motion, we will need that information, the percentage and the dollar amount so that that can be included in the motions.
Okay, I have to step away just for a second, so hold on, okay?
Yep.
Sadie needed to go outside. She's my dog.
Well, that's okay.
Thank you.
So fiscal twenty-three will be one thirty-three five. And fiscal twenty-four will be one thirty-eight.
Okay.
And those represent two and a two and a quarter percent the first year and. Three and.
Three point three seven approximately now.
In the last year. Thank you. And with that, uh I'll entertain a motion to. Um accept the super uh to accept the superintendent contract, put it into play, I guess.
So moved.
Thank you. Who seconded it?
That was me.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Uh roll call vote, all in favor? Nick?
Yes.
John?
You're muted, John.
There's a yes, thank you. Heather?
Yes.
Uh Jane?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Uh we need a vote on um high school, middle school, school security upgrade. Uh that was also discussed previously. And. I'll uh. Do we need a dollar number on that, Joanne?
So we'll need a vote to move forward with this project and then we'll need a vote for the transfer. Of three hundred and twenty thousand from charter tuition to the equipment replacement line.
Uh let's do them in separate votes.
Okay.
Uh first to uh authorize the trans. I'm sorry.
Yep, you can authorize the transfer of three hundred and twenty thousand from charter tuition to equipment replacement.
Yep. Uh I need a motion from. I'll also move that. Thank you, John. Come on, Heather seconded.
Yeah, sure.
All right, uh. Nick? We need to do a another roll call.
I'm a no for this one.
You're a no, thank you. Jane?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes, uh that's one opposed and four in favor. Thank you. The second motion, Joanne?
Is to move forward with the security camera replacement project.
With the uh having moved the previous motion, we'll be moving forward. With the security project. I need a motion again. Thank you, Heather, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, John. Uh roll call vote, Nick?
No.
Uh John?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
And myself, uh yes. Again, that's a four to one vote, it passes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh moving forward with the ballot and warrant for school committee elections, we need a vote on that too. Do you have a? A form to uh show or not?
Yeah, both the ballot and the warrant are attached and um. Tara, I'm not sure if you're able to let the committee know about um. Signatures, but I think we need to.
Yeah, we do have to have signatures um completed as soon as possible on the warrant, um so they can be posted within the town halls. So we we really should try to get them completed by the end of this week, if not early next week, we do have a timeframe on that.
And that's for people to come in and sign it?
Yes, we do need wet signatures.
Okay.
And yes, it needs to be every member of the school committee for this particular warrant that goes on.
So so just to be clear, we should come by the office or uh to sign that the warrant, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
So we just need a motion to approve the ballots, the ballot and the warrant.
Right, I'm just looking at the ballot for a second.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's all right and.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Nick. Is there a second?
I'll second.
John seconds, uh and now a roll call vote, Nick?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And Jane?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um for the warrant, does that require a vote or are we just waiting on signatures?
Uh both need to be approved, uh is my understanding.
Yes.
All right, then can I have a motion to approve the warrant?
Bill, can I interrupt for one second?
Yeah.
Um I just want to, since we do have a couple seats where we don't have anyone running, I do want people to. Keep their eyes peeled on social media or anything like that for people who are looking to be written in. So I'm not going to use the spaces. I have a name. Um you can see me on like Facebook or something. I can't do it here, but um. That is something to consider for the two Montague seats that will be open and uncontested, so spelling is important.
Actually, there'll be three.
Oh, three, right.
Three open seats, all in Montague. All right, uh do we uh, I'm sorry, did we get a motion?
Not not for the warrant, yeah.
I think, um I don't know, did Nick know that was before?
Did you say yes or did you want comment first, Heather? If you said you.
Yeah.
Then I need a second. Did I get a second? Thank you. Nick?
Yes.
Uh John?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Wait a minute, the ballot says for Montague that there are only two.
No, because the the one that someone is running for, there's two open slots there.
Oh, I see. All right, I'm reading it wrong. You're right, sorry.
It's tricky. The ballots are not exactly easy to figure out, which is why I try to remind people to that there's more to them than it seems. No.
Right. Okay. What am I doing? It's a good question. Back to the uh. Update on. I'm using the wrong mouse, that's the problem. It's up to me. Six Town Regional Planning Board, we have had. Some activity and the activity is specifically um putting together letters to both uh parents and to. Uh staff, teachers in particular, I think, and the not teachers alone, parents. Um as well, certainly um. Letters to uh encourage them to attend um. Forums that will be run by our facilitator, uh the same facilitator that we had previously. So she has some uh connection to the whole project. This is a person who's from, lives in Connecticut and is a professional facilitator. Uh usually working in in educational uh forums. So that's um conducive to some progress, at least she understands some of the concepts that we're trying to move forward with. In any event, that's the the whole six-town regional process is into community outreach at this at this point in time. Uh hopefully moving forward to be able to make a uh recommendation, which is our calling from to the uh. Various select boards of the six towns. Right now, that's um what I have to report, I think. Uh it's fair to say that um both superintendents of the districts have uh been engaged recently in this project. We appreciate that and we appreciate uh the support that for arranging um these forums. The support that we've gotten from from the two districts. Other than that, if there's any uh. I'm sure there there should be questions out there um for me to bring back to uh the committee. Certainly, that's in all of these forums, that's what we're, we are looking mostly to hear. People's thoughts, any thoughts that they have um following a presentation of the PowerPoint that we will have. And then also uh to engage people to communicate throughout the community, their communities um. And. Bring more people, hopefully get more people um involved in understanding what this is all about. Earlier, we talked about. Numbers, I talked about numbers um in. um, in relation to budgets and when there was a question asked earlier about the two districts joining. And I just want to always emphasize, this is more about number of students and staff than it is about the finances of it. And with that, any questions that you want to have to present to me or any clarification that you hope that I might be able to provide is welcome. And seeing none. We just talked about the open Montague school committee seats, so I'm not sure we need to discuss that any further, other than there are several seats open and we encourage community members, especially parents of students to come forward and be part of our happy family. Uh, we have two sets of minutes to approve, March 14th, 2023 and April 11th of 2023. Can we do them both at once or do people want to do them separately? And I'll take a motion either way.
I move to accept both.
And I'll second it.
Okay, and a roll call vote again, Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
And Bill, yes. Uh, any agenda requests? Jane and Brian and I will get together next week at Brian's convenience, which is our convenience. If you have any, please contact one of us or all of us. Uh, the next scheduled meeting, two of them, May 9th and May 23rd, both of 2023. And with that, I think I can take a motion to adjourn. I'll
Oh, I can second it.
Thank you, John moved, Heather seconded. Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
And I'll follow suit, yes, Bill. Thank you all, I think that's it. You're free to get away from me.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Enjoy the rest of your trip, Jane.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Just before, are we done recording? No, not yet.
Tina?
I'll send her a text. Maybe she fell asleep.
I can't imagine, we're interesting.
I hope so.
On my phone, it has a little blinking red light, which is different than on the computer.
Yeah, mine, oh, no, I have a blinking red light too.
Oh, maybe I just never looked.
Now it has a little shield next to it.
Oh, mine doesn't.